Good evening, everyone. I'm Sally Hogarty, president of the Arinda Association, which is sponsoring tonight's event. We would like to thank you all for being here, and we're especially grateful to the League of Women Voters, who are moderating, timing, basically making this all happen. As well as one other element that we would absolutely have to have, that would be the candidates. So we're so happy you could make it tonight. And you might have noticed that one of our candidates looks a little bit different. Unfortunately, Janet is overcoming COVID now, but she's still in quarantine, so she's joining us via the miracle of Zoom. So anyway, I would now just like to point out that we do have several members of the Arinda Association who will be circulating around the room, and if you've written out questions, please be sure and give them to one of our people, who will then bring them down to Mary, who will be sorting, to make sure we're not asking the same questions over and over. All right? And now, I would like to turn this over to our moderator from the League of Women Voters, Janet Hoi.
Thank you, Sally. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's event. My name is Janet Hoi, from the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley, and I will be your moderator. Thank you for joining us this evening, particularly the audience that is here today. Thank you so much for being here. As Sally said, this forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters Diablo Valley, the Arinda Association, and the Arinda News. And I'm going to take a moderator's discretion here and give you the 30-second pitch on the League. You may already know, but just to make sure. The League is an over 100-year-old, nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. We never have in those whole 100 years. We are here tonight as part of our key mission, to educate and inform voters about matters of interest in our local communities and about upcoming elections, which is why we are specifically here tonight. This is a two-hour forum. I don't think it's going to go quite that long, but it's scheduled for two hours for the Office of Arinda City Council. There are three open seats and six candidates, as you can see. And the candidates are, in alphabetical order, Alex Drexel, Stuart House, Brandon Iverson, Latika Malkani, Sunil Rajaraman, and Janet Riley, who you already know is joining us via Zoom. The Arinda Association is recording this forum, and it will be available via Zoom, on CCTV Comcast 26, as well as on the League's, our YouTube channel, and on Voters Edge. And as we were, people were coming in, I was handing out little cards about Voters Edge. Voters Edge is our electronic voting tool. You can get information, you can see your ballot, you can get information on where to vote and when to vote, and you can get information, as long as they've submitted it, on all of the candidates and all of our local and other races, federal races as well. So it's a very important tool. Also gives you information on the seven statewide propositions. And people tonight have already asked me, so what's going on with some of these propositions? Some of them are a little complicated. So we give lots of information on the propositions, as well as short videos on each one. So you can feel a little more comfortable that you really know what's going on. So please take advantage. Votersedge.org. We ask that audience members not record the audio or video, so as not to have misleading partial segments of our program. And we also ask, please silence your cell phones. I silence mine already. In addition, I want to ask in advance not to cheer or applaud any statement. It is disruptive and takes time away from the candidates. So I, as the moderator, have made decisions about the speaking order for both the opening and closing statements, as well as for the questions. So the speaking order for the opening statement will be alphabetical, A through R. The closing statement will be reverse alphabetical, so R to D. And the questions, the order of answering the questions with six candidates, we have to think about these things, that order is at random. So I'm going to have to queue each person when is their turn to speak. We thought that was the fairest way to do this. So they will have 90 seconds, open and closing, 60 seconds to answer each question. You probably noticed we have two timers here. When the candidate has 15 seconds left, they're going to hold up a yellow card. When they are done with their one minute on the question, or the 90 seconds, open and close, the red card's going to go up. That means you're off. Stop. In addition, each candidate will have the opportunity for two rebuttals, for one minute each, as long as you request it. Oh, and before we start, I don't live in Arinda and don't know a lot about the city, so I thought it might be helpful to give a little job description about what these guys are signing up for. So the city of Arinda is a general law city and functions as a council-manager form of government. Under the council-manager form, authority is concentrated in the elected council, all these guys are trying to get three of the six seats, which hires a professional administrator, called a city manager, to implement its policies. In addition to hiring the city manager, the city council also hires the city attorney, who serves as the city's primary legal advisor. The city council is responsible for establishing policy, passing ordinances, voting on appropriations, and having overall authority in the city government. In such a government, the mayor acts as a member and presiding officer of the council. The mayor performs various ceremonial duties on behalf of the city and council. There are five elected officials who serve staggered four-year terms. It's a four-year commitment. Oh, and by the way, their service is voluntary, and there's no monetary compensation. These guys are volunteers. I think that's important to remember. Okay, so we are going to start with the opening statements, and our first speaker will be Alex Drexel, and you have 90 seconds.
Great. My name is Alex Drexel. I have been a resident of Arinda for 10 years. And, you know, I was a renter for almost my entire life, up until the point of buying a house here in Arinda, and I lived in a lot of different cities. And I was, I just, I wanted to make sure when I bought, I lived in the kind of place where I could grow some roots and raise a family, and out of all the options I had, it was Arinda. So my wife and I got married about 10 years ago. We got married and we bought a house in Arinda, all within about the span of eight weeks. And so we married, we married, and I got married to Arinda at the same time. And, you know, divorce is absolutely not an option. It's way too expensive. You know, we can talk about Prop 13 later, but I've got three boys, three young boys, eight, six, and three. We are fully ingrained in the community, OBA baseball, soccer, Cub Scouts, OPP. I mean, we're just, we're living the Arinda dream here. I've got an undergraduate degree in economics from UC Berkeley. I've also got an MBA from the Haas School of Business. I'm an executive at a large software company, German software company, SAP. I've been in the technology and business realm my entire career. I have a history of public service. I was appointed by the mayor of Oakland to the civil service board by Ron Dellums and Jing Kwan, and I've been on the Parks and Rec Commission here for the city for the past four and a half years. I've got a capacity, I'm a volunteer, I've got a capacity to do more in this office. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Stuart?
My name is Stuart House. I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters and Arinda Association for sponsoring this event, and send get well wishes to Janet, who, as you know, has COVID. I've lived in Arinda for 18 years. I recently retired as the Director of Facilities, Maintenance, and Operation for the Arinda School District. We live on a creek. We have a horse, five chickens, and a French poodle. I am formerly from New Mexico, and before that, Michigan. In the course of my life, I have worked both in the public and private sectors. I am a general contractor, been in contracting since 1989, have licenses in New Mexico and in California. I built over 1,300 houses for Native Americans. I've done work in the Bay Area on projects, built a great many things, and happy to say I was able to apply those skills to the Arinda Union School Districts. So I'm hoping to help the intersection of the city of Arinda and the schools.
Thank you, Stuart. Brandon?
Hi, I'm Brandon Iverson, and I've been in Arinda for 15 years. My story is very similar to Alex's, about the marriage move kids kind of all at once. And my husband and kids are in the audience tonight, so hello to my three boys, 11, 13, and 15, and my husband Dane. I have been in California since college. I came out here for Stanford undergrad, where I was in Economics and Humanities Honors major, where I studied architecture, and that's part of my lifetime connection to real estate and place making, and it's a real passion of mine. So I went to Calog, got my MBA. I got my JD at the Northwestern Pritzker School of Law, and was a dot-comer for a little while, when that was the thing. And after that, I've been in real estate ever since, for 20-plus years. My parents were real estate developers together. They did some big stuff in the 80s in Texas and California. So after the dot-com bust, I went and worked with my father, and we built Kalistoga Ranch, if any of you guys know that. But we also worked on some big land and community deals. So I've done EIRs and homeowners associations, and worked with private roads and infrastructure and very large budgets. So a lot of the things that I see in the city council job ahead are familiar, and I've been on the Planning Commission for seven years, and that's something I'm incredibly proud of in terms of being part of this downtown plan process. I really hope to keep the momentum up and have an even bigger role in proactively making that happen.
Thank you, Brandon. Latika?
Hi, I'm Latika Malkani, and first of all, thank you to the League and Arinda Association for hosting this, and thank all of you for being here and attending on a school night, and for taking the time to inform yourself on local issues. I'm an attorney, a small business owner, and a mom, and I'm running to strengthen Arinda and protect all we love about this community. My husband and I moved here 18 years ago, raised our three kids from Delray to Marimani, the last just graduated in June. And over the years, I've enjoyed volunteering alongside many of you, doing a lot of what Alex talked about, and all the things that we all do here to keep the Arinda magic going, including for our kids. I'm an experienced leader and collaborator. I like to get things done. I've spent 26 years as a practicing lawyer, and I manage my own law firm. So I know how to battle, and more importantly, I know how to solve problems and collaborate. I've served on three nonprofit boards, including the largest Planned Parenthood affiliate in the nation, so I have experience in management, budgeting, and strategic planning. I presently serve as vice chair of the Arinda Association and as vice chair of our Measure Our Oversight Commission. And so I've spent hours working to make Arinda a model community in California when it comes to wildfire adaptability. That's something I'm very passionate about, and one of the many reasons why I want to serve. Arinda is an incredible community, and I've enjoyed living here, and I'd love to give back, if you allow me to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Latika. Sunil?
Hello. I'm Sunil Rajaraman, lifelong Californian. I was born in Santa Clara and grew up in Saratoga. Some of you might be familiar with Saratoga, not too far away from here. And aside from a brief stint in Cleveland, Ohio, where I went to high school, went to college in Southern California at Claremont McKenna, and graduate school at UCLA, where I met my wife Chitra, who's here with our two daughters, Vethika and Geetha, who are nine and seven, go to Wagner Ranch. We love the Arinda community. It's a really special place, and want to make sure it stays that way. I've been a technology entrepreneur, investor, and executive for my career, which I think gives me a pretty unique viewpoint on how I'll look at things as a city council member. I've built companies from zero to millions of revenue, and I've managed budgets as large as $100 million annually. So definitely not intimidated by the challenge of coming here and helping the city however I can. You know, I'm really focused on three things, which is, one, making downtown awesome. We generate the lowest retail or sales tax revenue per capita of any city in Contra Costa County. We should, you know, try to improve that. And of course, wildfire safety and keeping schools amazing are the two other issues that I care a lot about here. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Sunil. And Janet?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for accommodating me by Zoom. I have lived in Arinda over 40 years. I went to Sleepy Hollow School, the middle school, and graduated from Marimani. And then I went to Cal and graduated from Cal Berkeley, and then Houston Law School. My husband and I then moved back to Arinda, raised, to raise our children here and live near my parents. And my kids all went to Sleepy Hollow, OIS, and Marimani, just like I did. I've spent over 30 years in Arinda volunteering for the schools and other community efforts. I started out as chair of the Arinda Fourth of July Parade and Celebration, and made sure that it was the best hometown parade ever. In the schools, I got, I took a deep dive and became president of the Sleepy Hollow Parents Club, the OIS Parents Club, and then president of Education Foundation of Arinda, which is now called ONE. I've loved being part of the process of helping our children have the richest curriculums from kindergarten through 12th grade. My leadership style on all these different boards and other boards, I don't have time to mention, is to listen to all sides. And I want to say my vision for our revitalized downtown is to have colorful umbrellas with expanded sidewalks and bigger plazas facing out on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Now is the time for questions. I'll do my best to ensure that each candidate has the opportunity to answer each question, and we're doing this at random. Personal attacks are not permitted. Statements made about other candidates must be in the public record, or they are not allowed. And the first question, we're going to start with Brandon. And I think you, I think all of you answered this a little bit, but if you could be very specific, that'd be great. The question is, what leadership and managerial skills do you bring to the city council position?
Leadership and managerial, I think a lot of it relates to my time at the Planning Commission, even more so than all of the skills I've done in business. I do think leadership is a word that, among this group, I think I've got a little bit of a strength in, in that I've worked in a number of fields, and I've been a senior executive in business for 20-plus years. But bringing it back to the Planning Commission, that's the kind of consensus decision-making board that we're going to be as a city council. And I feel like, even just in this campaign, the six of us have gotten to realize that there aren't divisive issues, and there aren't divisive people in this election. And so that kind of consensus building, where you're open-minded, you're persuading each other, it's not a matter of taking charge, it's a matter of making the best decisions you can, and I think I would bring that as a particular skill.
Great. Thank you, Brandon. Next, we're going to Sunil, and I understand people couldn't hear me, so I'm going to repeat the question. I will, I'm just looking to you guys right now. The question is, what leadership and managerial skills do you bring to the city council position?
I feel like I'm very fortunate to have, you know, been a part of the tech industry during this pretty amazing time in the Bay Area. The past 15 years have really shifted the landscape, in some ways for better, in some ways much worse, and I think we've all experienced some of that to an extent. But that feeling of being an entrepreneur, building from scratch to something that exists and is a living, breathing entity is unlike anything else, and that's something that's unique that I bring to the council. But I've also been fortunate enough to know some other founders and learn from them as an investor and as a friend, including some tech products that we all use in the cities today, like, well, maybe for better or worse, Nextdoor, we won't count that one, but Lyft and others, and learning from others is something that I do very well, and that's something that I plan on doing as a city council member with whoever ends up being elected.
Thank you, Sunil. Next, Alex.
Yes, I've been an executive for quite some time. I've led large organizations, international organizations, through change and restructuring. And I think when you're, when you're, when you're, part of what a leader needs to do is actually manage change. In order to do that, you've got to be an active listener and understand all the stakeholders that are involved, be empathetic to those stakeholders, understand and listen what their interests are. And then also, you need guiding principles as you lead an organization. Before you embark onto change, you need to understand who you are and what you value. And I think I can use those skills to help manage, help together the city go through change, and that's what we're doing. We're having to combat climate change and prepare for wildfire. We have to deal with the housing element and all the change that goes with that. So to have a collaborator and a leader who's used to managing change and making sure everyone is involved and has a say is important.
Thank you, Alex. Latika?
So in terms of leadership and managerial skills, I addressed some of that in the opening, but I think the other very active commission that Arinda has right now is the SSTOC, or Hour Measure Our Oversight Commission. And since the beginning of 2021, I've been working on that commission, and frankly, working very collaboratively with a lot of the other members. And together, as a commission, I feel like we have led in providing some really great recommendations on what we can do to adjust to wildfire adaptability, which is our new place that we find ourselves in. Beyond that, serving on boards, including the Board of Planned Parenthood Marmonti, which ran 32 health centers, I served on that board for six years, and it really taught me, of course, some of the nitty-gritty in terms of, you know, oversight and budgeting and things like that. But what it really taught me the value of is strategic planning, and long-term strategic planning. And I think we're doing that to a certain extent, and we need to do more, and that's going to be an important piece as we proceed with downtown revitalization.
Thank you, Latika. Stuart?
I've worked for government at the local, state, and national levels. I've served on the board of many nonprofit organizations, both in Michigan, New Mexico, and in California. In Detroit, I was the deputy director of the Detroit Council of the Arts, director of the Summer Youth Employment Program, a principal for the Employment Training Department with $130 million budget, which I managed. I was also the assistant director of Community Affairs and Staff Training with the Michigan Credit Union League. I worked running a poverty program for whites in North Oakland County, a commissioner for the Consumer Affairs Department, and I worked for the United States House of Representatives. I ran the Michigan Senate, and I worked for President Carter, running the southeastern Michigan campaign for the president.
Thank you, Stuart. And Janet?
In addition to all my school leadership work, I've also been president of the Arinda Garden Year, for 30, and involved as a...
Janet, you're sort of breaking up.
Oh, dear.
Why don't you start again? Maybe we can, it will be better.
Okay. So, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So in addition to working for the school parents clubs and EFO, I've served on the Arinda Garden Club Board for many years, and president as well, and I've been on the board for the USDA NorCal for four years. I run the Social Justice Committee with a friend at Santa Maria Church, and have brought in three families, refugee families, and coordinated that effort with different community services. I've found in all my volunteer work, I am balancing the various stakeholder interests and needs, and I'm always fundraising, and always budgeting, and always strategizing. The key to everything I do is listen and involve everyone's opinions and get buy-in and consensus. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Janet. We can hear you clearly. Okay, next question, Alex will start, and the question is, what is your plan to revitalize downtown Arinda? There are some empty buildings, also empty street fronts in Theater Square. What is your vision for a more vibrant downtown?
I think the Downtown Precise Plan is the key. We have to create incentives for development and increase density. I think a great place to start when it comes to including housing in downtown Arinda would be to include some at-market senior housing down there. I think people at some point want to downsize, and to have that option to stay in Arinda is something that I'd like personally. I also think housing for teachers, city workers as well, is a win-win for the city. And those types of developments are going to prime the pump for downtown and increase, you know, traffic, pedestrian traffic down there for the businesses. I think also we have to, we have to take a look and support small businesses downtown and do what we can to support the Chamber of Commerce. And then also, we have to think about the mix of businesses as they come in and make sure that businesses on the ground floor are the ones that generate foot traffic. Creek restoration is another great thing to take a look at, to improve the appeal of downtown. I think it's a win-win. We can use development to do that.
Thank you, Alex. Next is Brandon.
I'm going to build on what Alex said. Strongly agree. The Downtown Precise Plan is such a powerful tool that I don't know that people appreciate what a chill to redevelopment. You know, you'll hear people say, you know, why would a landowner who hasn't sold their site before just suddenly sell it now that it's rezoned? But the fact that we were only zoned for 10 units an acre, and people had to come in and ask for a variance, Arinda had a reputation for being anti-growth, and I think with all of the state-imposed requirements, and the fact that we did pass the, or we will have passed, the Downtown Precise Plan, it's a sea change in terms of what's possible and what those parcels will be worth. I do think we need to do a lot to incentivize retail specifically, and not just multifamily on those sites, so retail-specific incentives in the housing. But I also agree the creek restoration would be wonderful, and a lot of the correct and connect Arinda ideas for our public spaces, building on some of Janet's ideas about plazas and connections are important.
Great. Thank you, Brandon. Latika?
What Alex and Brandon said. And then in addition to that, I think you're going to hear a lot of consensus response to this question, which bodes well for Arinda. You know, in addition to that, I think I would encourage the development, and all of this is in the DPP, it's in the Downtown Precise Plan. Everyone really should skim it. I would encourage the development of arts and cultural centers, explore joint partnerships with community organizations that might be willing to promote speakers, entertainers, and other functions that benefit our residents while also supporting the local business community, whether it's our beloved Arinda Theater, or our local businesses in Theater Square on the other side. I would continue and also expand the city's efforts, and I think the city's council is starting to look at this, to promote, integrate more pro-environment amenities to downtown, such as additional electric vehicle charging stations, and better preservation of the creek and natural habitats, and then also really encourage beautification with a, both by making sure that the design standards work and that we have a overall aesthetic that encourages art in public places. Thank you.
Thank you, Latika. Janet? Can you hear me, Janet?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have to unmute myself.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with everyone as well, and on top of that, I want to say that I think it's very exciting. We're on this verge of change coming and a plan being enacted, and possibilities are real. They have been talked about for a long time, so if we're elected, we're going to be very, very lucky to be part of this process of actually making something happen. The key is how do we make it happen? How do we make it vibrant? We've got vision, but, you know, it's the property owners that decide, so I think we need to build relationships right away with the property owners as new council people, and build a relationship, and talk about what the plan says and what it means for them. And then as far as empty buildings go, in certain places historically, we need to go reach out to those owners right away and tell them we're concerned, and see what we can do to move that along. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Sunil?
I think I have to mix things up a little bit here, just to keep the audience on its toes, just a little bit. So here's what we're going to say. I do agree with the Downtown Precise Plan, and I support it. I'm also just new enough to Arinda and just stupid enough to be a little overly optimistic. So I would love to bring some amazing, like, fresh retail to downtown. When I walk around Theater Square and I see the empty lot with the subway, where the subway used to be, that makes me a little sad. I would love to see like a Phil's Coffee there. I know the founder of the company. I'm trying to recruit him to get something, you know, done here, but of course, I don't know all the nuance behind, and I know that retail's been attempted to put, you know, downtown before, but I want to bring some fun and exciting things to downtown. I think that's the key, while balancing and supporting the existing retailers who have done well here for a long time. We need to do a little bit of old, a little bit of new, and make this place fun.
Thank you, Sunil. And Stuart?
I'm here to say that we have a consensus. All of us supported the Precise Plan. It's a very carefully crafted document, which had a lot of input from stakeholders, and it's been refined and can be refined further. I have a few ideas, but one of them is to bring... I have a few ideas, but one of them is to bring in the Arinda Vision, which has been a group that's been around for a long time, trying to improve downtown. And they've got a lot of wonderful, great ideas. We should include their ideas in our planning process. I also would like to bring in some innovative businesses to downtown. I had this idea or wish that we could bring something like Chez Panisse, or Essen, or some other very, very fine restaurants. That'd be an anchor for other businesses that might come in. And I'm also a bank at Bank of America. Time's up.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay, moving on to question three. And it's kind of a big question, and we may have some follow-ups. How do you foresee balancing the competing demands of meeting the state mandates regarding affordable housing, while maintaining the semi-rural feel of Arinda that residents treasure? And we're going to start with Brandon.
That's the question of the night, isn't it?
I think it is.
It is the most important thing we have to address. And frankly, it's why I'm running. It's so challenging and difficult. And I, these guys have heard me saying this the whole campaign, that the state is trying to solve a huge problem of housing need generally and affordable housing. And because of that, the state has one tool, and that's density for affordability. And they will pass as many laws as they have to pass to make sure that housing gets built. But they count a huge home in Wilder, the same as they would count a studio apartment, because they want dwelling units built. And what we want is to maintain our character and our community feel. We have wonderful schools that attract 95% families here. And so, I do think the Downtown Precise Plan is the perfect tool to actually get the downtown revitalization we want while building that housing. And I think people are going to build on this theme.
Thank you, Brandon. Alex?
I think if we demand good design from the developers, we can retain some of that rural charm. You can, you can use softer materials, you can set back upper floors, you can demand screening and good planting and things like that. Also, the sites selected for the housing element are also important. You can't, you can't, you know, put all the housing in one spot. It'll, it'll create an area that's just unbecoming of Arinda. And then also, one last thing, you know, we're elected officials. You're not electing us to be city staff, so we have to comply. But at the same time, you know, we can use our positions to lobby for different allocation methods for these housing numbers through an organization called A-BAG. So, to make sure, make sure that those numbers reflect the limitations of Arinda, and that we don't put our people at risk for wildfire and through evacuation routes. So, I think there's kind of, there could be potentially a political process outside of this to make sure that we get the right housing number.
Thank you, Alex. Latika?
Again, I think we have consensus that we have a really huge challenge here. I don't know if folks are aware, but the state law, currently, the allocation for Arinda is that Arinda must plan, not build, but zone for and plan for an additional almost 1,400 housing units by 2031. So, you look at that and think, where are they going to go? So, it's not an easy task. We have limited sites, we have unique geography. I'm very concerned about our vulnerability to wildfires with limited evacuation routes. And we're car-dependent with heavy commuter traffic and few arteries and limited parking. So, I think as we plan, all those issues have to be front and center. And we need to make sure we're really involving the community in terms of a lot of encouraging resident input as we go through this planning process and as new projects are determined. And, you know, but also view it as an opportunity for Arinda to attract the residents and amenities and the builders that will help us build a more vibrant community. And that goes back to the DPP again.
Thank you, Latika. Stuart?
I'm an advocate for teacher housing and senior housing. I was very pleased to see the council approve the latest project, and would hope we could do more of the same. Hope we can, in part of the Downtown Precise Plan, include additional housing there. They're right. This is a really challenging mandate from the state, and how we are going to pull it off is going to be really hard. There's some sites that have potential that are in the plan, like, believe it or not, next to Cal Shakes, I just saw King Lear. And it, there's a spot there that could accommodate some housing. And there's a spot at Marimonti behind the school where additional housing could be put. So, yes, it's a critical chore for us to, to meet. And, and I'm up to the challenge as a builder and of homes.
Thank you, Stuart. Sunil?
It's a television commercial. I'm not a real estate developer, but I play one on TV. No, I don't have a real estate developer background like Brandon, who's obviously much, going to be much deeper in these issues. I do think that the two things that I would add are, it's actually, you know, the 1,400 units are going to turn into a lot more we have to plan for, because it requires a 25% buffer, as I understand it. So, really, we have to plan for a lot more housing. It seems like an onerous situation, almost. My thoughts here are to look in, I mean, I'm very interested in the inclusionary zoning ordinance, which other cities have implemented as a possible solution to this problem. I am also very interested in affordable housing for teachers. Other cities in the Bay Area have experienced significant teacher turnover, turnover. Daly City in one year experienced 25% turnover in one high school alone, and they were forced to reckon with the issue. So, anything that helps teachers with affordable housing, I'm in support of.
Thank you, Sunil. And Janet?
Hi. I too appreciate how big this issue is and know that we have to do, we have to follow the law, but we don't want to do it any sooner than we have to. We want to postpone this if we could, but we can't. I really value providing housing for seniors. I think that that'd be great for our aging community to have more places to move to when they want to downsize. And of course, I'd like to see teachers with housing that they can afford.
Great. Thank you, Janet. Moving to question four. And Alex, you will be the first responder. If you win a four-year term, what would you like to see at the end, what would you like to see in Arinda at the end of your term? What changes would you support and work towards achieving?
At the end of my term, I'd like to see a vibrant downtown with investment and some housing for teachers and for seniors. I'd like to see, you know, progress on the creek being restored and with trails, and trails that better connect the city. I'd like to also know that more of the community is better prepared for wildfire. You know, about 28% of the homes in Arinda are in the firewise neighborhoods. We'd like to increase that percentage and make sure that we educate everybody in the town about evacuation routes and how to home-harden, and as well as take care of their properties to make sure that they're ready to prevent wildfire. So, those are the types of things I'd like to see at the end of four years.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Brandon?
Well, I know there's a lot of consensus going on tonight, but I've been here 15 years, and there still isn't a single new building in the whole time we've been here. And Mo Mashun is the only person who has been incrementally renovating projects one at a time. I think the New Nations is going to open momentarily, but it's really slow-going. And if there's one thing that I can do in the next four years would be for actual projects to get built. I think one thing that's really changed, and it's just building on earlier themes, is that for 10 years at least, there was a raging debate about growth or not growth, that people didn't want to see multifamily downtown. And that was a really big debate. And now that the state is forcing us to build all these new numbers, now it's becoming a tool to make the downtown redevelopment happen. And it's pulled together what was a really divisive issue, and now it's creating a how problem that has really been a unifying issue. And that's a very good thing.
Great. Thank you, Brandon. Latika?
I actually absolutely agree with Brandon, that I think, I think the housing is the silver lining that is going to give us the incentive to get developers to finally build, change, or sell. And that's what we need. So, in four years, you're not going to have a completely vibrant, completely redone downtown, and I'm not going to promise you that. But I too hope that a couple of these projects are actually happening or have been implemented. And beyond that, what I do think that we can be though in four years, because we've been working on it a couple of years already, is I think we can be the model town in California for wildfire adaptability. We are really looking at some of the most incredible things that, that we can do. It's going to take everyone's involvement, but we are well on our way. And I'd like to see a lot of the recommendations that the current council has blessed continue and be implemented. And beyond that, as we do all this, I'd like to see us create more community, right? Whether that's through increased inclusivity or more resident engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Latika. Janet?
I think realistically, on the vibrant downtown goal, I'd like to see, and I know it was said one or two projects, and I guess I'm going to be more specific. I would like to see the conversion of a corner lot, some corner lot in Arinda that is revamped to have that plaza and those colorful umbrellas, and it's a dining experience or a walkable downtown experience. Just one corner lot. And another thing I'm thinking about is, we're going to see increased parking issues. The pandemic, hopefully, boy, do I hope, will be over soon, and parking at BART will be a bigger issue. And I'd like us to come up with some more ideas on how to deal with that as it becomes more pressing. There are lots of things we could do, and we'll, we'll get to specifics later. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Sunil?
Yeah, so if we were looking at a dashboard behind us, you know, four years from now, and we, and you said, did we, did we do our jobs? I would think of maybe four things, four metrics to look at. One is sales tax revenue growth. Is sales tax revenue going up? If it's not, we didn't do our jobs. Second, grade schools, very measurable. You can look at teacher turnover, you can look at grade school ratings, et cetera. If they're still good, that's good. Third would be safety. This is a safe community. That's very measurable. We got to keep it that way. And then wildfire safety, avoiding really, like, you know, a horrible situation with a wildfire, keeping our residents safe would be four. And then just more broadly, you know, the Downtown Precise Plan, seeing that all the way through, which it sounds like we all support, that's, that's a no-brainer. So, that's how I would look at it.
Thank you, Sunil. And Stuart?
When I'm last, everyone steals my thunder. So, I agree with everything that's been said to this point. There are a couple of other odd things, like incentivizing those businesses that we're trying to get to collaborate so we can actually get something done with the downtown. And things like getting our wildfire plans and actions in place so that a lot of homeowners who are experiencing their insurance being cut off, their homeowner's insurance because of the wildfire issues, if we can make some real progress on that, maybe we can, even as a council, approach the insurance industry and say, we've got this under control now. You ought to, ought to allow our residents to be insured and to lower our insurance costs.
Great. Thank you, Stuart. Question five. I think this is a pretty straightforward one. Are you willing to pass a resolution banning gas-powered leaf blowers? Can you commit to bringing this to a vote? And voting yes. Sunil, I'm sorry. Sunil, you start.
Gosh, not, not super deep in this issue, but not a big leaf, not a big leaf blower fan. And, you know, I would, I would support a resolution to gas-powered leaf blowers. No.
Thank you, Stuart. This is Sunil. Stuart, you're next.
Yes.
Okay.
You're bringing me back to that famous New Yorker article for like 10 or 15 years ago, that was all about this issue and how it was a big issue in Arinda. And I did read that. I, the one thing that I'm just going to put out there is, a lot of us don't do our own yard work. And let's just be realistic about that. And so, I would be, just kind of want to hear and be concerned about the extra burden that raking, if you choose to rake, I guess you could just leave, leave the stuff, the leaves there, that's also good for the environment, would cause on frankly, a workforce, right, that we employ and, or that a lot of us employ. So, probably, but I need a little more education. I don't like to make decisions without at least hearing all viewpoints.
Thank you, Latika. Brandon?
I agree. It sounds like a great idea, but like Latika, I don't know the fact, because I don't think raking is an equivalent substitute. And so, I'd like to know that the green energy alternative of the gas-powered leaf blower is out there and is ready for mass adoption. The city council just about a week ago had a similar thing about whether we should ban new gas hookups in new houses. And it's a great idea, but when you get into the details, it's like someday, but not today. So, I would just need to learn more, and it's a terrific idea.
Thank you, Brandon. Janet?
I also need more information and would want to hear the other side. I'm aware of how the leaves, we leave our leaves in the beds that is great, great mulch. It's a great idea. I don't know if there's an alternative, gas-powered. I'd be open to talking about it and hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Let me extend my answer slightly.
Let me let Alex go, and then you can have one minute. And you all have two options to do one minute, right? It's officially rebuttal, but we'll let you do that. Alex?
I agree. I mean, in any decision, the devil's in the details and hearing from all sides. And so, you know, I'm just open to the idea.
Right. Thank you, Alex. Stuart, one minute.
Briefly, there are electric-powered leaf blowers that are a lot quieter than those gas-powered. And I think we ought to do everything in every way we can to get rid of our carbon problem in this world. We have a very serious climate change issue. And every opportunity we can electrify things, we'll be better off, all of us, the whole world.
Great. Thank you, Stuart.
Can I have my rebuttal, too?
Yes, you can.
I think Stuart just convinced me.
You guys work so well together. Okay, question six. And Janet, you're first up on this one. What specific measures would you support to protect our city from gun violence?
Well, I guess I'd start with the Sheriff's Department and talk to the Arinda Police and find out what the gun violence issue is. If we're talking about the schools, if that's what you're talking about, or if we're talking about guns at the restaurants or in our homes, I would want to know more about where the issue arises. And would want to, if need be, find more money to protect us. And then I'd also want to have more educational programs in our community so that we understand how to protect ourselves. I wouldn't be promoting gun ownership for homeowners. Okay, so I would need lots more information. I'd have to research.
Thank you, Janet. Stuart?
Unfortunately, most gun violence is suicide and domestic violence. And that's really hard to regulate. The council last year, I believe, was, or the year before, because I testified at that hearing, that urged that guns be locked up under lock and key, which, so that in the home at least, they're not accessible by kids or by partners in a fit of rage, you know, they can't easily access guns. We are really actually less endangered by strangers than we are people we know. If you look at all the murder rates all across the country in every community, it's people we know who commit those crimes. So, we just need to have some more education about gun danger and enforcement as, you know, for people who are reckless with guns.
Thank you, Stuart. Brandon?
That was a great answer on Stuart's part. And I don't, I'm going to answer with a non-answer, which is that I don't think it's something that our Arinda City Council is really going to need to address in the next four years. This city is incredibly safe. When my kids have a day off school, I give them $20 and a bicycle, and I turn them loose. And as close as Rock Ridge, where I work every day, there are people getting held up for their laptop in the middle of the day at a coffee shop. And we have such an incredible record of those rare times when crime seems to increase, the police get them. And people here really do feel safe. My favorite Nextdoor post of all time was the police posting something saying, hey, we know you guys feel really safe, but do lock your cars at your own homes, right? It was such a wonderful Arinda moment. And it's a very important national and state issue, but I don't know that it's an Arinda priority because we're doing so many things right. right.
Thank you, Brandon. Sunil.
Yeah, I'm with Brandon on this one. I think this is a pretty safe community, and frankly, I'm going to plead ignorance and not even sure at the city level what we should do as a council with regard to this. I mean, we are, on a violent crime basis, safer than neighboring Lafayette and Maraga, I believe, when we checked the stats before we moved here. So this is not something, you know, beyond, you know, giving our, continuing our safe, you know, neighborhood policies, something I would directly address.
Thank you, Sunil. Alex.
You know, well, the city of Arinda actually has a gun safety ordinance, and so it relates to proper storage of guns, and it's enforced. So we've already done a little bit around this. I just think when it comes to gun safety, it's all about education, educating the public about how to properly respect guns. And the only thing, the other thing that comes to mind, just as a parent with kids in schools, you do kind of worry about, you know, kind of like an active shooter situation with the schools. It's every parent's nightmare, it's mine, and I just think that, you know, we should definitely work with the sheriff and the police department to make sure that we're ready for that type of event.
Alex.
Rebuttal.
Let's let Latika go, and then you can rebut.
So I actually think that this should be a big priority for Arinda. Not because, we are lucky that we're really safe, but we need to, you know, crime in general is rising, the prevalence of guns out there and random, and gun violence is on the rise everywhere. I am very proud that I got the gun safe candidate distinction from Moms Demand Action, and I've been really involved with moms over the years. And that's because of the impact of gun violence on my own children and how they perceive it and perceive the need for safety. There's several things we can do. We do have a safe storage ordinance. California also has laws about being able to remove guns from those who are at risk or at risk of harming themselves or harming others. And the other thing we can do is provide additional behavioral health resources, especially in the schools. But the key to all of this is increased education. If we have these laws and no one knows about it, it doesn't do anything. And there's a lot we can do that's very positive. Thank you.
Thank you. I got everybody, right? Everybody answered that question? Oh, you need a rebuttal. This is your second rebuttal. Second and final.
Second and final, I only get two?
You only get two, yeah.
Interesting. I worked, as I said, for the school district, and it was my responsibility to oversee that part of our school safety protocol, working with the sheriff, the police chief, Secret Service, and some, the Department of Homeland Security, we had studies done on what we needed to do to make our schools safer. And again, we are in a safe community, but we have done a number of things. I'm really afraid of developments like in Northern California where there are gun rights, people who want to arm all teachers. I do not think any such nonsense is something, is a direction we should go. We just need to make our schools safe.
Great, thank you. Okay, on to question number seven. And there were a number of questions about private streets, and I'm going to give a little bit of background, and then the question, I hope I've incorporated everybody's questions. And Stuart, you will be the first to answer on this one. Okay, the background. At times, various issues have been raised to the city council concerning the services provided to private street residents. One concerns the exclusion of private streets from the city's road maintenance program, while an estimated 20% of Arinda's residents live on private streets, paying the same property tax rates as everyone else. The private street residents need to self-fund their road maintenance, even though much of the road damage is caused by city contracted services such as garbage pickup. Here's the question. What is your position on opening up road maintenance to the city's private streets?
Well, it is a complicated issue, because we have some situations where homeowners associations do maintain very private access. But I think in general, the whole thing is unfair to a lot of people in this town, because when they first moved in, there were agreements made that they would have, quote, "private roads," but they're in fact used by everyone, including the utilities, like the garbage pickup folks. So I think it's unfair, and I would support at least a careful analysis of every private road in this town so that we can study it and figure out what it would be a fair solution.
Thank you, Stuart. Sunil.
Yeah, this is a very complicated issue that I did a very deep dive of over the past couple of weeks, so my education on this one has been fast. But, look, I think there is not a binary solution to this, right? So I think what I've seen is, hey, we should just bring all private roads into the public system. I don't support, you know, a binary action like that. I think, you know, there's obviously issues like drainage, different classes of private roads, there's, you know, roads that are on HOAs, et cetera. However, this does need to be looked into in great detail, at the very least via a survey of every private road, more likely a task force of some sort to research this issue further, and, you know, see what can be done and which issues can be addressed. Do we address the drainage issue separate than, you know, other issues? So nuanced, I support additional research on this, for sure.
Thank you, Sunil. Latika.
I'm going to say what I said two years ago about this issue, which is that it's not just complicated, it's a hot mess. And it continues to be, in that it does seem really arbitrary, if you look at some of the roads, on some of them, half of the road is public, the other half is private. Sometimes it's really clear, and there's a lot of logic to it, and it's sort of easily understood, and the residents were very aware of it. However, so I agree that it's something that we sort of need to look at. I don't, you know, I also, I know private road residents that are really, really upset about this issue and feel that they're paying taxes and not getting the benefits of that, because their roads are sort of used, they're not just a handful of homes, but they're used by a lot of folks, almost like a public artery. And then I also know folks who don't want to, you know, are wondering where the money's going to come from, right? And so you can't make promises without making sure we figure out where the monies come from. So I do agree, looking at it, but I want to make sure we maintain our reserves.
Thank you, Latika. Brandon.
Just ruffling some feathers, because I've been exchanging some emails with some of the private road folks, and I think we've all been asked to get up the learning curve really fast on a very complicated issue. There's one fairness argument I don't buy, and that's the one that says, well, gosh, as long as nobody was maintaining any roads for all those years, it was okay, because we were almost better off not having to pay all those taxes. But, you know, gosh, now that we have to pay our sales tax going for everybody else's roads getting made nice, that's not fair to us. We shouldn't have to pay that tax. And it's like, well, that's not how taxes work, right? If you've never had kids, you still have to pay for the schools, whatever, and that is not quite right. But what does feel like a legitimate fairness argument is the fact that it's 20% of our roads. We were an unincorporated county, and we only incorporated in the late 80s. I'm running out of time. So I do think that with that higher percentage of our roads being private, we need to study it, we need to work with them, we need to treat it like a homeowners' association or a private maintenance area, and storm drains for sure are the priority of those two issues.
Thank you, Brandon. Janet.
I agree with Sunil, we definitely need to study this deeply, there's a lot there, and I want to be fair, I do want to be fair, but I feel like we need to know more about what all the private road folks think. Not every private road resident wants any change. They may very well like having a private road so that they can maintain it, because historically, the private homeowners are going to do it more quickly than a city. So I think we need to listen to all sides and work through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Alex.
Well, I do agree, this is a difficult situation, and I do sympathize with some of the folks on private roads around taxes and how those funds are being spent. It's difficult, because the figure that I saw was about $30 million to bring all those private roads up to snuff, and a lot of times, it's not even realistic, because the roads are so narrow, you can't even get the fire district to kind of go ahead and sign off on it. But I, you know, I think, and also drainage is another problem, because the roads are related, it's a system. And, you know, if you've got drainage failures on a public road, it can impact a private road and vice versa. Also, the cost have just recently increased, because the drainage requirements are going up at the beginning of the year with roads, and so that increases the cost by another 30%. So it's difficult, you know, when I think of these hard issues, I look for quick wins, I think something we could do immediately is help with information on these private, with these private roads, to know what these people's options are. Show them how HOAs are formed, show them how benefit districts, special districts are formed, to kind of start, giving them guidance on what they can do. Because there's a lot of information out there that they can use to know how to improve their situation.
Great, thank you, Alex. On to question number eight. This regards, I have a couple of questions about schools. This is around school funding. I have heard Wagner Ranch is having difficulty getting one Arinda funded. Our schools depend on this funding. Is this a consequence of the affordable housing that Wagner has the most students? That was an audience question. Forgive me. Does anyone want to clarify that?
Sure. Wagner Ranch seems to have a lot of lower-income or a lot of affordable housing students. They have a lot of kids from outside of Arinda. And as a consequence of that, they're not receiving as much or not getting as much funding with the one Arinda fund. So what I'm getting at is that, you know, we're putting all this housing, lower-income housing directive, and our schools are going to suffer because of that.
Janet, could you hear that? Okay. Moderator's discretion. I'm going to ask that you come here and use the mic, so all of our panelists can hear your clarification. And Janet, you'll be the first to answer this one. So the audience member is coming up here to explain what the question refers to.
Sure, can I take my mask off? Can I ask that question, too? Why do we have masks on? Hi, Janet, I should have talked to you earlier about this. My question is that, you know, we've either been pushed or, I don't know, shoved into having the affordable housing. And as a consequence of that, the folks at Wagner have a lot more of these families there, and they're unable to obtain their goals in the Arinda One Fund. So I guess I look to the council, how do you see to adjust that or work around that? I mean, you talked about A-BAG, so they're one that are out there pushing us into it, possibly because if we accept state funds, we're pushed this direction. I think that's moving more, the state government's pushing us even harder. But does that make sense?
Okay, would you mind just giving your name?
Tom McDowell.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Okay, Janet, you could hear that, right? Okay.
Unmute, there we go. Okay, hi, yeah, Tom, thank you. So our role is not to determine the Arinda One's funding requirements. We're partners with Arinda One, and we support what they decide they need to raise in order to fund all their programs. So to the extent they want our help, we would be there to help them, but to some extent, it seems like an internal issue for the Arinda One to decide if there should be, you know, some kind of leniency or special circumstances, or if they should be encouraged to raise funds differently. I'm not sure. Or it becomes based on need or ability to pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Stuart.
Well, I'm familiar with Arinda One and the parent clubs and the fundraising that they have done, and know that they have a greater population at Wagner Ranch, and they draw from Wilder, which has a fairly affluent community, and they draw from parts of the Sleepy Hollow Minor Road area a little bit. So the students who might be considered disadvantaged or from affordable home, I don't know that it's such a significant number, because we actually don't have a lot of, quote, "affordable" housing in this town. They have a system where they have students that transfer in from other districts, intra-district transfers, and some of those end up at Wagner, because they have a greater capacity. So I expect that that will shift in future. The boundaries may shift to give Sleepy Hollow some more students, so that we have more equitable distribution of students regardless of income or anything. But geography will change slightly.
Thank you, Stuart. Brandon.
A few different ways I'd love to answer that question. First of all, that's really up to the school board and to ONE, and I know Janet knows so much about this having run EFO. ONE is a relatively new concept, and it's such an improvement over the way they used to raise funds from each school separately, and it only got the money that it raised. The idea of ONE is actually to be able to have fewer competitive organizations asking for donations. So they may still be working out the kinks to come up with a fair system that where each school kind of benefits from what it raises, but the city council can do very little with that. So I know Emily Allen, and that's a relationship that I look forward to having an open line of communication. That's not really a city council question, and Stuart's right, some of those out-of-district people are not because we have affordable housing. We do need to think about the quality of our schools and how we do have more affordable housing that the state's requiring us to have, and keeping the private donations that make our schools so excellent stay high. And that's a challenge we're up to, but a big one.
Brandon. Alex.
I can only, I've just got anecdotal experience. I volunteered a lot last year in the lunch line at Wagner. I've got two kids there. And, you know, it was, I know every single kid in the school, I know their faces. And they all could afford to buy lunch. Back then, you had to pay for it. I remember having discussions with Manheimer about the changeover with the lunch routine, going to Universal lunches, and he talked to me how almost no kid in the school qualified for lunch assistance. So it kind of surprised, the question kind of surprises me. I think we should obviously encourage, you know, people to give to Wagner Run, I wrote them a big check, I don't know. But, you know, there's things that we can do at the school, like in the capital plan, we're improving the pathway from Minor Road to Wagner. That's great, kids can walk to school. So, I mean, there are things that we can do to help support the school from our perspective, and that's one of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Latika.
Yeah, I also was somewhat confused or not quite convinced by the premise of the question, because in full disclosure, my kids went to Delray, but they, in later years, had a lot of friends from Wagner, and my experience was that it's no different from any of the other schools. And I know that, and I don't think we have a lot of affordable housing in Arinda, we have a situation where starter homes are like a million and a half, which isn't really affordable right now for a lot of folks. You know, and in terms of housing, that's a separate question that I think we've all addressed, and those homes have to be built. I know that, you know, there have been some challenges in terms of donations to schools and supporting Arinda One, and I think those all stemmed more from sort of pandemic and issues like that than the premise of the question. So that's just my experience, it's somewhat anecdotal, but having, you know, having relationships and hearing from friends who have been very involved in supporting Arinda One, who are supporters of mine, that's what I'm hearing.
Thank you, Latika. And Sunil.
Yeah, I echo what Brandon says, and this is definitely a school board issue. I mean, I have our two daughters at Wagner, anecdotally, I can tell you that, you know, they're having a great experience. But, you know, I, to your point, I mean, Arinda is one of the poorest school districts in all of California, which is, you know, I think we rely a lot on parent donations. So anything that we can do to keep that up, I mean, that's just an artifact of Prop 13. So, you know, we'll do our part, we'll cut checks like Alex, and, you know, we'll get others to do it, and hopefully, we can keep the quality of education high through that way.
Can I have a rebuttal?
Yes, you can. Go ahead, Janet.
I think we've all touched on the fact that maybe the premise isn't correct, but I think we might think about how that might be a view of the future, and that maybe affordable housing with young families. Right now, our affordable housing tends to be seniors, but if it were younger families, how is that going to impact our fundraising? Because we don't have any money from the state, we have to rely on our parents and our community to support the schools. And if we have families that can't do that, we need And if we have families that can't do that, we need to anticipate that. If they can't donate, we need to work with the school board and the Arinda One to deal with that. That may be coming down the pipeline.
Okay, thank you, Janet. Question number nine. This is concerning fire and safety. Maraga Way is our primary exit route in an emergency, yet it is heavily backed up before and after school, Miramonte, during commute hours in the evening, and with endless utility work, which gets down to one lane. Any thoughts on how to address relying on a heavily trafficked road as part of our primary evacuation route? And we start here with Latika.
Okay, so I'm going to disclose that we had the benefit, all of us, last weekend of discussing this with the Lost Valley community, and I think we came up with collectively a good solution. No, this is a real problem. We, so our current evacuation, we do have Zone Haven, and we have Arinda evacuation plans, and you should, everyone here should sign up for the community warning system and look to see where your evacuation route is for your neighborhood, okay? Having said that, this is correct. We've got one artery. You know, I don't see us building roads anytime soon to build a second artery. So what do we do? You know, we had some discussion about how we need to reduce the traffic. We need to try to get more commuter transportation for kids to school, but again, that's a funding issue if we're talking about schools, and would require, you know, private investment or personal commitment to that by parents.
Great, thank you, Latika. Janet, you're up.
The whole idea of an evacuation is pretty scary, and the whole idea of getting on a road and trusting that it's going to be going out, both lanes are going to be going out the way we're supposed to be going out, and that everyone's going to follow those rules, that's a pretty big deal, pretty overwhelming to imagine we can all oblige. We, I think the underlying concern is that it's already so much traffic, and then if we bring in more residents and more density, how are we going to get them all out this evacuation route? And busing maybe is a way to get them out on an evacuation. I don't know if that's been tried or thought of, if there could be a bunch of buses that help people evacuate. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Sunil.
Yeah, it's noticeable, the traffic, obviously. It's the one thing we've, you know, have noticed since after the pandemic is fewer and fewer people are taking public transport. So if you've tried commuting in, in the morning to, you know, over the Bay Bridge, for example, it takes the same amount of time it took before the pandemic, but with fewer people because everybody's driving. And so this is a real, real problem. You know, as far as solving the transportation issue specifically, actually funny enough, Lyft's original vision was a community carpool. It was a company called Zimride. You could easily reignite something like that in the community like this, so we should use technology tools available at our disposal. But short of that, I mean, we're just going to have to plan, you know, worst-case scenario planning in some ways, and make sure evacuation routes are clear in the event of emergency.
Thank you, Sunil. Alex.
Well, there are a number of things that we can do. I mean, we've got the red flag days for streets, and then also, you know, they end up making the traffic go one way as well. I know there's planning around that as well, if you have to get to your, you know, get to your kid in the event of a wildfire. A couple of things, though, I think this is why the safety element is so important. So, you know, I worry about ADU development and SB9 developments also that could create potential hazard during evacuations when you've got density in an area where really it shouldn't be because of that reason. And so state law does allow for both of those cases. For ADU, you can restrict development according to the width of the street, and then also with SB9, the planning director has discretion around that, as long as they're based on solid criteria. But we need the research for the safety element to be done first in order to put those policies in place.
Thank you, Alex. Stuart.
This reminds me of the square peg in the round hole. It's a really, really difficult fix. I like the point Alex made about the planning for evacuation where there's one way out, so we at least double the area of evacuation. There are other things that I know we experienced on Maraga Way in the morning commute, and with the school advocated that we put a stoplight at the corner of Ivy Drive, because one of the things that causes the crunch is Miramonte and OIS having to be in that same area, and they're not being able to make a left-hand turn. And if we had a traffic light, we could at least moderate some of that traffic right in that area. So there's, there are some solutions that I think we can explore as a council.
Stuart. Brandon.
All right, I'm going to bring this back to fire evacuation, because somehow we got onto busing and transportation and solving the commute. When there's a fire, you're not taking a bus, right? And you're not one parent, one kid, all trying to go to Ivy Drive. You're trying to get out. And if you think about the way Arinda is laid out, it's kind of a hub and spoke. There are a lot of things we're doing right. Measure R was so good and so helpful. You know, until about the last two or three years, we were not prepared, and we've really woken up as a community, and we're doing so many things about evacuation education, evacuation routes. It's probably the scariest issue we face. I mean, I don't worry about gun violence, I worry a lot about wildfire. And if you think about, Maraga Way isn't really the concern so much as if the fire's in any one location, those neighborhoods are getting out, but Wilder people are scared, people on El Toianal are scared, people on Manzanita are scared. But I do think the team that is implementing Measure R is doing as much as we can with our most serious issue.
Thank you, Brandon. I'm going to combine the next questions.
Can I have my last rebuttal on this?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, you can have a rebuttal. Maybe I had forgotten you. Rebuttal.
No, you didn't forget me. So let me tell you what we are doing, and I'm going to use this as a little bit of a PSA. We have a pilot program, as many of you know, where there is no parking on red flag days on El Toianal. We need to expand that to other neighborhoods. Only on red flag days. Yes, this is inconvenienced, but it can save lives. We've done evacuation drills. We recently did a virtual one, it went well. We've done an in-person one before. We need more of that so folks know where to go. We have the signs up on Minor Road, which would be activated so it becomes one way if needed. Again, more of that. We have Zone Haven, everyone needs to be signed up for it, and community warning system, everyone needs to be signed up for it. And to that end, we're just getting started on clearing our evacuation routes. We need to remove the vegetation, that is really important. We need to facilitate more firewiser, cert-centered neighborhood communities, and we're about to hire an education and outreach coordinator who's going to be the city boots on the ground till every single neighborhood in Arinda knows what they need to do. And it's education that's going to be the key to making this work.
Okay, thank you, Latika. So I'm combining two pretty straightforward questions. You can answer both of them. First person to answer is Alex. The first is, do you support making Juneteenth a city holiday for employees? And the second is, will you make sure that Arinda will never have parking meters? So Alex, you're up.
Yes, I mean, anytime somebody wants to have a holiday, I'm up for it. I support. So, yes, why not? You know, I think it's an important, it's an important day.
Yeah, I think your mic.
So I think it's an important date to...
Janet, we're having some mic problems.
That's ding, okay.
Okay, good.
See, I think that the date deserves some type of recognition like that. Sorry, I missed, what was the second part?
Parking meters.
Oh, parking meters. I, it's, I don't like parking meters either. So, you know, I just, I think when it comes to the council, we'll just have to look at all the facts and make a decision at that point. But, I mean, right now, I just, I need more information.
Thank you, Alex. Brandon.
Juneteenth is a state holiday, and it's required to take it off, and I'd be surprised if the city isn't already giving its employees that holiday. And no, I will not promise to never have parking meters. I know that's what people want to hear, but we can't all park for free in the Rite Aid lot forever. So we're going to have to, parking's a really, really big challenge, and for us to do better on the downtown revitalization, until we can build a big billion-dollar vertical parking garage, we might have to have meters at some point and in some locations. And it's something I'm really looking forward to digging into.
Thank you. Brandon, Latika.
Yes, I would support that Juneteenth is a city holiday. I think it's, I think it's an important holiday to recognize, and it seems to be more of the norm in a lot of workplaces. I hated when the parking meters went up in Lafayette in the town square there. It really, really bothered me, especially because it was a, and I've actually gotten a ticket there, and that bothered me even more when I realized the funding wasn't going to the city but to a private operator. But I also am not going to, I'm not going to say that I will, you know, make an absolute determination on this as a litmus test question, because I think it really does depend on, we're about to embark on a huge, huge revitalization plan, and, you know, to that end, I think Brandon's point is well-taken in that it would, it's context-specific. But I hope that we don't have to have them here.
Thank you, Latika. Sunil.
I support Juneteenth as a holiday, and on the meter issue, same as Brandon and Latika. You know, in summary, if we have, you know, I hate meters, I paid my fair share of parking meters. At UCLA, it was their largest single source of revenue by a wide margin. It's the worst. But, you know, if we are going to revitalize downtown as we all say we want to, then it's going to be a problem if people are just camped out at, you know, Chez Panis, if Stuart has his way, for seven hours at a time. Like, that's just going to be a problem. We can't, we can't have that.
Janet.
I support Juneteenth as well as a holiday. And as far as parking meter goes, I feel like the underlying question is, are we willing to give up that semi-rural character of our town? If we have parking meters, don't we have, you know, a big Lafayette city on our hands? So I think we'd think carefully about it. We'd have to analyze how well we're doing with just having hourly parking and how well that can be enforced without imposing meters. But I wouldn't be surprised in the end that we resort to it, but I would like to postpone it as long as possible.
Thank you, Janet. And Stuart, you have the last word on this one.
In case you didn't know, I'm African-American. So Juneteenth means something for me, even though it was a holiday that arose out of Texas where slaves were not notified of the emancipation until much later in the summer, instead of when it was passed, when it was proclaimed by President Lincoln in January. And I'm like Alex, my wife is Jewish, and we celebrate Yom Kippur, which was yesterday. And so I like holidays. Also, for parking, I'm disinclined to parking. I'm hoping that we can, in the Downtown Precise Plan, figure out how to make parking happen. That's got to be a part of how we make the town vibrant by providing adequate parking.
Thank you. Okay, question 11, and we are getting towards the end, just so you know. And Brandon, you will answer this one first. What will you do to keep Arinda a clean community, free of litter, graffiti, and dumping? Cities around us have many problems in these areas, and we want to maintain our precious environment and beautiful community. Can this be incorporated into the downtown revitalization?
I don't think we have a big problem with tagging or litter. Arinda's amazing. I've got some Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts in my family, and I've got to say they do a lot of community service. The Arinda Garden Club does a lot of wonderful beautification things. We're doing so many things right. We are a clean city. It's terrific. And I think so long as we keep the crime rate low and we stay the strong values-oriented community we are, I don't think it's going to be a problem. And I don't think downtown revitalization is at all at odds with keeping the community character exactly the way we have it now. And just having nicer buildings and better public spaces and more places for us to connect, I don't see the difference. I do think the creek restoration is part of taking something good and making it even better, and I think that'll be a really nice addition if we can make it happen.
Thank you, Brandon. Latika.
I really don't like seeing a lot of litter in places, too, so I actually do agree that we want to maintain that. And I'm grateful that Arinda is such a pleasant place to be in. I think that with the DPP, yes, it will bring in more foot traffic, so that, you know, but usually planning accounts to make sure there's adequate, you know, ways to deal with that, appropriate receptacles and all that. But also overall beautification helps, you know? And so making sure that we develop in a way where we have open public spaces. I love that some of our, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of great art in our otherwise, you know, relatively smaller jurisdiction, and we are so lucky to have that, whether it's the utility boxes that are painted and things like that. And I think continuing with that tradition as we build is going to be really important.
Thank you. Alex.
You know, one thing, you know, since I'm on the Parks and Rec Commission, we talk about, a little bit about garbage, and the Big Bellies have been a tremendous, you know, improvement. The technology there has allowed us to be cost-effective and also kind of monitor the level of garbage in each of the cans, and they've got these great reports and stuff to optimize the way that the trash is picked up. So we should, we should continue to, you know, have programs like that. The graffiti, I agree, it annoys me, you know? I mean, actually, it's been a problem recently. The tagging has, there's been a big uptick in the last several months with tagging. You know, it's hard to know what to do about that. You know, I mean, part of you wants to go, let's stake out a Big Belly and sit all night and wait for someone to go and tag it. But it's just not going to, it's not going to happen. It's not realistic. So, you know, you know, that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Alex. Sunil.
I mean, nothing additional to add, other than, you know, all of us have experienced tagging on our signs as part of the city council election, so I would say we have firsthand experience there. Of course, I'd like to see less of that. But, no, I mean, I am proud of the fact that this is a, this is a community that's relatively, you know, clean, safe. It's part of the reason why we moved here. So, you know, of course, we got to, you know, prevent any downside from happening. The Downtown Precise Plan contemplates, you know, beautification of the city, as Latika talked about, and, you know, I don't have a specific policy I would enact at this moment to prevent anything from the future from happening.
Okay, thank you, Sunil. Stuart.
Well, everyone's right, we pretty much dodged the bullet on graffiti and on litter. I know that I pick up papers when I walk my dog in the morning when people litter. I know that we can develop programs with, say, young people, or they've had like jobs for youth where they pick up litter, if we have it along certain areas, that creates summer employment or some other kinds of jobs for kids that you can get grants for to support that. And you also, as a policy at the school district, we clean up or spray over graffiti as soon as it happens, and it has the tendency to discourage the taggers from coming back. If they tag and you clean, and you cover it up, and they tag again, you cover it up, it tends to discourage them from continuing the practice. The city can do that.
Thank you, Stuart. And Janet.
I think it's also really, really lovely that our community is relatively clean, and I think people take a lot of pride in that, and I think it's helpful that we have great variety of garbage cans, and that we should continue to have that as we build out or change our developments. There's often a good amount of garbage on the way in or out on freeway off-ramps, or, and I don't know how we could fix that or improve that a little bit. I don't know if a garbage can at the crossroads would help, but there's just so much junk there. One day a year, Arinda in Action, it's called, comes around Earth Day, around April 18th, and all of Arinda's invited and encouraged, and a lot of Arindas participate in going around town and picking up garbage, and maybe we need to do it more than one day a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, two more questions, and then we'll go to closing. Thank you, Janet. Okay. Two more questions, and then we'll go to closing statements. This has to do with schools. Our schools were not named in the recent news of best schools. Anything you can do to enhance schools? Our schools are very, and this is two-part. Our schools are very open. What is being done to secure them? So, how do you enhance and get back on the best schools? And then, how do you secure them? Stuart, you are the first for this one.
Thank you. That's my forte. I'm running because I want to, as I say, strengthen the intersection of our schools and the city. And whatever the city, in fact, I was encouraged to run for city council, so I could be the school's person on the city council. I've been endorsed by all members of the school board. And, I wanted to say that our schools really are in the top 5% in the state. And they, I believe, will be on the road to improving once we get past the downturn from the COVID pandemic. And I think they will, you know, just by virtue of the leadership of our new superintendent, pull back up to their rightful places, being number one or number two in the state. But we're pretty close to the top. So, I'm not really worried about that, because there's a lot of hard work going on for that purpose. What was the second question?
Security.
That's happening. I'm done.
Thank you, Stuart. Sunil.
Yeah, I think with, just like with anything else, I mean, of course, I would love for us to be on the great schools' top rankings, but it's not the only metric we should, we should optimize for. There's other rankings out there, et cetera. Obviously, we should just be a top school in general. I, I go back to the, the issue of teachers, and keeping our best teachers here, as, as the primary, like, kind of precursor for that being the case. So, I am worried about a daily city-like situation, or others, other, you know, cities in Santa Clara County that have experienced a lot of teacher turnover. We cannot have that happen in our community. If we lose our best teachers, those rankings are going to go down. So, let's find ways to retain our best teachers through affordable housing or any other mechanism that we have. With regard to, you know, safety at schools, admittedly, you know, I'm not super deep in this issue, but of course, I would support anything that would prevent, you know, or that would, that would secure our schools further.
Great. Thank you, Sunil. Latika?
So, in terms of enhancing our schools, I think our schools are great. And, that, you know, I agree with Sunil, that teacher retention is a issue where the city council can influence, by providing local preference and housing, not just for our teachers, but for our police, and our firefighters, and our city personnel. I would love to see more folks who work in Arinda be able to live in Arinda. And with regard to, you know, but with regard to securing schools, I think my understanding is, there are appropriate efforts in place. And I know that, unfortunately, I have seen some of, some of that done. But really, the best way, there's tons of studies that say the best way to minimize sort of school violence, and especially gun violence, is to really, to build community, right? To have the school be an anchor in the community, where folks know each other, right? When we all know one another, then we can, we can get a pulse for what's right and what's wrong.
Thank you. Brandon?
I agree. I'm gonna start with the security question, because I don't want to not have open schools. I love open schools. So, yes, you need to plan for that worst-case scenario, and have teachers that know what to do, and preparedness. But, I don't want our kids scared to go to school. And I don't think we are that community, and I don't ever want to be that community. In terms of the, the best schools, whoever asked the question doesn't know that Arinda Intermediate School just won a major state recognition. I forget if it was distinguished schools or a gold medal, but OIS did get recognized for being amazing. And it is. Looking at my sixth grader here in the crowd. So, yes, we need to focus on academic excellence, always, always, always. And, in the Ask Not What Your Country Can Do For You category, we're not the school board. Everybody listening tonight needs to donate, because the way you get great schools is parents need to donate, so we can pay the teachers, we can have the great facilities. I'm so proud of what we have. So, keeping up.
Thank you, Brandon. Janet?
I also don't want to see us locked down. I think we need to keep the open feeling, and I think it's a great idea to continue to build a sense of community. I, I kinda wonder where this question's coming from. I wish we had a little more background. But maybe someone's looking down the road at the future, and is worried about the future. And as far as the best schools go, we're always in the best category, and there are all different kinds of ways to measure what makes a great school. And, we're doing the best we can to raise money to provide for our teachers and our aides, and our outstanding selection of electives. So, if it's related to the pandemic, I think we're gonna come back, and we're gonna find that our kids are feeling good, and about themselves, and trying really hard, and doing really well in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. And Alex?
I think there are a lot of innovative ways that the city can help reinforce our schools. I mean, number one is, you know, teacher housing. And that is a fantastic way to attract and retain talent, if you have affordable housing for teachers. That's like, that's number one. We're already doing some cool things with, with the, with the district already. We have, we share the, the playing fields with, with the district. So, the city maintains the fields. The city, the, the school uses them during the day, but then the Parks and Rec Department uses them after school and on the weekends. That's a fantastic, innovative way to support the schools. Also, we've got the busing program. The city supports that, the Lamorinda Busing Program. As far as safety, we've got to include the schools as part of the, you know, the evacuation route planning in, in the, in the safety element, and, and make sure that that's included as well. And also, in our, in our capital plans, when we, when we go ahead and focus on bike and pedestrian paths, they are always targeted around the schools. So, our capital spending is, is generally targeted around those areas to improve, improve the, you know, the experience that our students have when they go to school.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Okay, this is the final question. I think it's question number 13. And I've not heard this question before, and I think it's a fabulous one. Latika, you're gonna be the first to answer. For those with full-time jobs, how will you balance your paid job with the responsibilities and demands of this job? Yes, great question.
That is an excellent question. Personally, it, prior to agreeing to run again, some of you know I ran two years ago, and this time, I did some soul-searching, because I recognized that one thing I was gonna be doing is really cutting back on my full-time job. So, I'm not gonna be working full-time. Now, independently, I kind of don't want to be doing that anyway, just because of where I am in life. But, but, you know, and feel, have gratitude that I'm able to do that right now. But, so, it is, this is, you know, we're all up here answering 13 questions, so that we can work part-time for you, on a volunteer basis, for four years. So-
For free.
From that perspective, whatever happens on November 9th, you've got six amazing candidates up here, and Arinda wins, you know? But, it is a challenge. I have served on, I've always done a lot of extracurricular stuff personally, and I've served on the Measure Art Commission, and been on a lot of the ad hoc committees and things like that. So, I've, I've, I've been doing a lot.
Thank you, Latika. Janet?
I'm not outside the home volunteering for the past 30. I've been-
Janet, you're breaking up again, so maybe just start again.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Is that good? All right?
That's good.
I am not working outside the home. I used to practice law, and for the last 30 years, I've been a volunteer for the community. And, every job I've taken on, I've worked 110%. And I don't really want to give up all the different wonderful things I'm doing for the community right now, if I'm elected. So, I plan to work more than 110% as a volunteer, including my job on the council, if elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Sunil?
I mean, a lot of caffeine, and a little sleep. But, you know, I'm, I'm good with four to five hours a night. So, I've trained myself. No, I mean, look, I'm, I'm actually gonna be starting another technology company here pretty soon. So, I'm gonna be an entrepreneur, and, and would be taking this on. I'm just used to doing a lot. I have throughout my entire life, whether it's, you know, writing, investing, et cetera. I did an investment in a company a couple weeks ago. I, I just, I have to stay busy constantly. That's just my MO. I run on adrenaline, and I bring a lot of energy to it. I'm motivated by learning. And, based on all the, all the candidates I've met so far, who I'd enjoy working with, and the residents, and the, the citizens of Arinda, this would just be fun. I would enjoy doing it.
Thank you, Sunil. Alex?
I have a very long history of having these part-time volunteer positions with cities. As I said, I was on the civil service board for, for Oakland, was nominated by, by Ron Dellums and Jean Kwan, and, and spent a lot of time there. I've been juggling this for the last four and a half years on the Parks and Rec Commission. Yes, this is a bigger commitment, but I, I can definitely do it. You know, my, my wife is gladly agreeing to take up some of the slack with the kids at home. We've had that discussion. I've talked to my boss. My golf game's probably gonna take a hit. You know, no more binge-watching Stranger Things on Netflix. Like, I mean, I will, I will, I will make some adjustments, but I, I know I can do it.
Those are big sacrifices, right? Thank you, Alex. Stuart?
I'm retired.
Isn't it great, huh? Anything you want to add to that, or you're, you're good?
Well, I, one thing. I, as a builder in the Building for Native Americans, I used to run jobs in four states simultaneously, building hundreds of houses, driving thousands of miles. This is not a big challenge. I've belonged to multiple organizations in the course of my life, on boards, and serving in public office in other states, and done those things all within my life.
Thank you, Stuart. And Brandon, you get the final word on this one.
Good, because we talk a lot about diversity. And, for those of you who know working moms, working moms get stuff done. It's just, it's really good that at this time of life, you know, we don't just have the city council be people who are retired. It's important to have younger parents, parents who have older kids, people who are retired. There's different perspectives, different bandwidth. But, I will say, you know, men who are parents and CEOs, they do boards of directors, and charity boards, and, this is my one thing. I'm not doing any boards of directors, and I'm not doing any philanthropy. This is my one commitment outside work and kids, and it's something I would be thrilled to give all of my passion and excess energy to making happen.
Brandon, how about a quick round of applause for the thoughtful- for the thoughtful and comprehensive answers you all gave. Thank you very much for making those answers as fulsome as they could be. We are moving on to the closing remarks. We are gonna go just down the line, starting with you, Janet. You have 90 seconds.
Thank you, everyone, for making this forum happen, and offering all your questions. With my 40-year residency and 30 years of volunteering in Arinda, I live and breathe Arinda. I want to take this unique history and my legal background, and address the concerns of the community as they arise. It's exciting. We're on the verge of finalizing the Downtown Precise Plan. And I'm eager to meet with the property owners, explain the plan, and listen to their interests, so that we can move forward. I want to listen to all sides of issues, research issues, build consensus, and do thy best I can to serve Arinda as your city, city council person. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Sunil?
Yeah, I, I'm really grateful for the opportunity, once again, to, to speak to all of you at this forum. I think the thing that I bring to the table is, is really that, you know, background of accountability, and being held accountable. As an entrepreneur, there's nothing, nothing riskier to do. You're always at the knife's edge, and your company can always be at the, the precipice of failing at a single moment. I've also been in executive environments, as, as a, at a company, where if you miss a quarter, you're, you're in trouble. And, I, I say that because I want the citizens of Arinda to hold us accountable, as a council, whoever wins. If I, you know, if I am fortunate enough to be one of the winners, then great, hold me accountable. If not, don't worry, I'll be holding the rest of them accountable. And, and for us, it's, you know, I think the, to reiterate, the, the sales tax revenue growth, making sure that the retail is usable, making sure that we continue to have great schools by keeping our best teachers, making sure that this continues to be a safe and wonderful place to live, and, you know, making sure our residents are protected in the event of a disaster. And so, hold us accountable, and I'd, I'd be honored to have the privilege of being held accountable by you.
Thank you, Sunil. Latika?
So, this is participatory democracy at its best here, with six of us asking you for, for your vote, and Arinda wins. So, why me? What I think I uniquely bring to this mix is both continuity, and a new but complimentary perspective to the current council members that are gonna be continuing. With three incumbents stepping away from service, I bring continuity, because I'm so involved in our wildfire resilience and infrastructure planning. I've spent hours reading about best practices, talking with experts, meeting with stakeholders, drafting recommendations, sometimes redrafting recommendations and reports, to help us prepare for the wildfire emergency and all that comes with it. We've accomplished a lot, but we've also just begun. And so, I think my knowledge and experience in this area would very much benefit the council. What I also hope to accomplish is to govern from my lived experience, which I think has given me a liking for results that are good and just, and for caring for today's children and tomorrow's environment. And finally, I am a proven doer and collaborator. I believe in action and results we can all see, and I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and get stuff done. I'm a hard worker. I also believe in putting ego aside and forging common ground. I'm a problem solver who will work for you. My goal here, and my reason for doing this, is to see good policy implemented, to keep pushing the needle forward and improve our quality of life. Thanks for participating in this process. Please vote, and I'd be honored to have your vote.
Thank you, Latika. Brandon?
So, tonight, there are six people, and you're not picking one, you're picking three. So, I would invite the people who are listening to this, to think about who's on your baseball team. There's, I meant it when I talked about diversity. There's some great perspectives, and you could pretty much throw a dart with the, with the six of us, and have three people who are gonna be qualified, and caring, and collegial, and really try to get along. And we're all good generalists, and we're all proven. So, who's on your baseball team? When I think about the key issues for the next four years, real estate's one of them. The Downtown Precise Plan, and the housing element, and the requirements from the state to build affordable housing or lose local control are critical. So, when I try to say, what do I offer to be one of the starters on your roster, it's that I've been at the table for seven consecutive years, and I'm on the planning commission right now. I was the chair when we did the ULI Technical Assistance Panel. I was part of Connect Arinda. I heard all of the public input. I've heard all of the people talk about what they care about. I've been part of the drafting of all of this, and I've been involved in the EIR. I've done homeowners associations. So, please, let me bring that experience, and that passion, and contribute to your final team.
Thank you, Brandon. Stuart?
I agree. We have six amazing candidates. We, we will win, regardless of whom you select. I hope I'm among them. I'm on this, I'm in this race, because I'd like to do what we can to keep our schools great, and improve them. My, I was originally gonna run for school board, and I was convinced by others to run for the city council. I was surprised that they urged me to do that, but I now understand. They want someone on city council who will represent the interests of our schools, and help, have the city help maintain and improve our schools. I don't have kids in the schools, but I'm a beneficiary, as a homeowner, of, you know, our, our great property values that we have, we have because of our schools. And so are a lot of other senior citizens like myself. There are issues, including fire, safety, our housing element, downtown. I'd like to be a part of that. I really would love to see our downtown thrive and grow, and become a wonderful destination for our citizens and others. I hope I have your vote, and I thank all of my fellow candidates, and I thank, actually, our retiring council members, Amy Worth, and, and Mayor Fay, for their service. And, I'm missing one person. Dennis Nikosla, for their service. So, thank you all for running, and thanks to our retiring council members.
Thank you, Stuart. And Alex?
So, I, I'd like to echo some of the comments here. I would be proud to serve with any, any of these people up here on, on the panel. So, you know, I think, I just think the town has got a great slate of candidates here. I, I think what makes me unique is that I've got a good mix of private and public sector background. So, I, you know, I, I'm a businessman. I, I work in technology. I, I lead large organizations. I work- I work on transforming. I've worked on transforming organizations and guiding them through change. But at the same time, I've got, I've got a deep background in volunteering for the city of Arinda on the, on the Parks and Rec Commission. I was the chair of the commission during the pandemic and helping the department, you know, manage that change and, you know, processing refunds and getting the word out what's happening with programming and whatnot. So I think I've got a good mix there. And, you know, I, I think the town, much like some of the organizations that I've led, you know, a leader, as I said earlier, manages change. And when you go into change, and you, change meaning adapting to climate change, getting prepared for wildfire, also dealing with all the housing element aspects and the state mandates, before you, you, you're a leader in going into that, you really have to know who you are and what you value. And, and I, I understand, I know why I live here. You know, we, we balance, we balance budgets here. We, we, we value our schools. We value safety. I value the small-town feel and the semi-royal feel of this, of this, this town. I mean, I, I love it when I come back from on the peninsula and, and coming back here, and it's this great respite, a place to live. So I'll take all of that to decision-making on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. How about one more round of applause for these folks? Okay, and for further information about candidates, issues, and voting, please go to votersedge.org. That is our League of Women Voters voter information tool, and it's completely nonpartisan. And remember too, voting, in-person voting is November 8th or before at early voting sites, and mail-in ballots, which every registered voter will receive, are going to drop on Monday, October 10th. So be ready for that. So thank you again. Thank you for your participation and your patience in getting through all of this. Have a great evening.